Everyone in the stands, we'll ask our attorney Clint McKayhill to lead us in the pledge and have Ms. Charlotte have a prayer for him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for the privilege of assembling here to conduct the business of the city. We ask that you would be with our commissioners, give them wisdom in the decisions that they have to make. We pray for our troops, wherever they may be, that you will watch over them and protect them. We just thank you for your mercies and your goodness to us. For these things, we ask in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. We'll call the regular meeting of the City Commission to order. Thank you all for coming. Welcome. We'll get started with the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our January 21st meeting. If everybody's had a chance to read and look over those, I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve is our second.
Second.
Second. Mr. Langston, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passed four oh. Commissioner Lowery will not be here today. He had an important meeting in Orlando that he had to attend, so he will not be here today. Okay, Building Department, that's a quarterly thing. Long-term recovery was last meeting. PSJRA, Mr. Ashbrook, report on that and report on what we're doing.
We are currently in the process of working on a 2021 budget, trying to figure out a new way to continue redevelopment throughout the city and not have to be just in one area. We're going to form a new entity is what we've been talking about. I'll probably have a workshop forthcoming to determine how that's going to work and how it's going to look. But that is all I have at this point.
Very much. Mr. Attorney, we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Mayor. Several things on the agenda today. The first one being the second reading and adoption of ordinance 566, which is a large-scale planned amendment filed by David Warner. I need a vote for the second reading and then we'll need a motion and a vote to adopt.
Okay, there's a motion to, for the second reading of ordinance 566, large-scale planned amendment. Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Mr. Langston?
Mayor, I will have to abstain. My employer is the owner.
Okay, as one abstention, so any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passed three oh and one abstention.
Ordinance number 566, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, by and through procedures required for large-scale map amendments pursuant to authority under state statutes, section 163.3184, specifically changing parcel ID number 03037-000R and parcel ID number 03040-001R from low-intensity commercial to medium-density residential R2, and providing for repeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
You now entertain a motion to adopt 566.
Sub move.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion?
Same abstention, Mayor.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passed three oh and one abstention.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 567 and the consideration of adoption. That's for a planned unit development zoning district.
Mayor, this is actually, the pod is actually associated with the large scale is what this is.
All right. Everybody getting that, it's 567. It's not on the agenda, but it left off by mistake.
This is a pod for, that would go with ordinance 566. Same abstention.
Okay, all right. Okay, entertain a motion for ordinance 567.
Sub move.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passed three oh and one abstention.
Ordinance number 567, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida relating to the amending the zoning code, amending the city of Port St. Joe zoning map, designating and establishing the Madison Garrison Planned Unit Development Zoning District, adopting certain regulatory requirements for the Madison Garrison Planned Unit Development Zoning District to supersede requirements in the city of Port St. Joe zoning code, providing for repeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, I entertain a motion for adoption.
Sub move.
Motion to adopt 567. Is there a second?
Aye.
There's a second. Any discussion?
Abstention.
One abstention. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passed three oh and one abstention.
The next item on the agenda, Mayor, is ordinance number 568. That's dealing with the changes for the sheriff, the property where the sheriff's, the sheriff's department office is, changing it from industrial to public use.
Okay. Everybody up to date with that? And so I'll entertain a motion.
Sub move.
A motion of Mr. Ashbrook. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Langston to second reading of ordinance 568. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passed four oh.
Ordinance number 568, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, by and through procedures required for small-scale map amendments pursuant to authority under state statutes, section 163.3187, specifically changing parcel ID number 04842-100R from commercial to public use and parcel ID number 04842-200R from residential to public use, and providing for repeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to adopt.
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Ashbrook. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Langston for adoption of ordinance 568. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passed four oh. Next item.
Commissioners and Mayor, I've put on the desk in front of me a draft of the lease agreements between the city of Port St. Joe and involved schools, district schools regarding tennis courts at Lamar Faison Field. I just drafted the agreement pursuant to the marching orders that the board gave me. I have not got a hold of Charles Costin yet. To give him a copy of this to see if there's any changes that he maybe wants, but that's where I'm at with regards to this.
It's a pleasure of the board. We'll just table this to the next meeting. We have time to read over the lease and you can get it. Okay, with everybody else? Okay, we'll just move that to the next meeting.
Okay. Next item is regarding a couple of voting issues. The first one being Commissioner Hoffman's bringing up the possibility of moving the commissioner and mayor terms from two years to four years. As far as this voting season coming up, there is, I've talked to Mr. Hanlon at the supervisor's office, and there's plenty of time to do that before next election. We would simply need to get him the referendum language to him by the day after qualifying, which is on the 26th of March. So, I mean, we could do this if the board so desired this term.
Okay. It's a pleasure of the board.
My feelings are, the whole idea behind this is if we can save the city money on elections and to encourage people to actually run for the seats. But at the same time, I don't support the idea of just putting that on the ballot. If the two seats have no opposition, which is mine and Commissioner Lowery's, if those two seats are unopposed, then I can't support just spending the $10,000 to run that on the ballot.
And it's also traditionally, as Mr. Hanlon told me, if there's nobody running, just a referendum on the ballot, it gets a very, very low turnout. No one shows up to vote.
I think we do know, need to talk a little bit about what you have discovered as far as following the statute, the number of signatures.
Yeah, that's next.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just don't want to push forward at this time until we, we know we have an election process that we're going to be paying for anyway. So I don't know how you want to move forward with that.
Is there any way to move forward with the clause that says in the event of there is no contested seat, that it would not go on this?
Sure, we could absolutely do that.
We could say it will go on the very next election, even if it's a contested election.
The thing that I would see, and this really doesn't have anything to do with legalities, is simply, do we have a feel for what the community, is anyone even behind this? Is this something I don't know?
I've spoke to two people that have a lot of confidence in their opinion, and they both were opposed to it, a four-year term. I will tell you that.
Maybe you're wasting.
It may be, but like I have said from day one, I'm going to support whatever the people of St. Joe would like to do. I don't want it to be where we have to pay money to get that answer. It may be that the community may support a three-year term, or they may want us to go to one-year terms. At least we're discussing it and we're talking about it at this time.
We need to continue talking about it. Both, I mean, the four-year term definitely has merits. You can see some drawbacks too, but I really think it's probably got a few more positives than it does negative. But we just have to feel the community out and see if we want to go forward with it.
And I'm fine with that. Maybe move forward with putting it on the next ballot and maybe even having the choices of, do you want to stay at a two-year term? Would you support a three-year term or vote for a three-year term? Or would you support and vote for a four-year term? It's been a long time since it was talked about. It was '06, is that what we're saying? Somewhere around. It's been a long time.
And we could run a non-binding referendum as well, asking those three questions and see which gets the most. You know what I'm saying?
And we just have to get that to the supervisor's office by March 26.
Okay. All right, let's talk about the next meeting, see if we make a decision on one way or the other.
Sounds good.
As far as the other aspect, getting so that we just, that a candidate can qualify by petition. Right now, we are currently following half of the state statute. We are following in terms of the cost and the formula contained in the state statute for calculating what the cost is. And apparently that's going to be about $500. We are not, in our charter states, it's 30 by law. So we're obviously following the state statute, not our charter as far as that goes. We, we could simply right now, the board could direct the clerk to issue to the supervisor that we're going to follow the state statute the way it is right now. There's nothing stopping us from doing that. We wouldn't have to do an ordinance. We could just go ahead and do that. That way, that currently is, is it's 1% of the registered voters. Mr. Hanlon sent, that would be approximately, would require about 25 signatures. That would be all you would need to qualify as opposed to paying the final fee.
1% of the number that voted in the last election?
I believe it's registered voters.
Total registered voters.
Registered voters. That does not create a very high bar for qualifying for the election, which could have some ramifications. We could have numerous people running that would make the election cost a lot more money. There's pros and cons to all those things. But there's, the way this, the conflict, if you, how you simply follow the state statute, the general rule is the city has to follow the state statute minimally, but it can be more restrictive if it wants to. So we could, the board, we could enter a statute saying, for instance, that you'd need 5% of the registered voters, which would increase that amount, or 10%, or 2%, or whatever you wanted to do. And we could do that. The problem is, we're kind of running out of time. We'd have to do a first, do the ordinance, first, second reading, advertise, and then you'd have to leave the candidates' time to qualify by March 25. We're quickly running out of time to do that. It'd be really tough to do that.
What do you think was the legislators intent when they came up with the 1%?
I just think they might not have been taking rural, small municipalities into consideration. That'd be about the only thing that I could think of.
1% of the total voters in Miami District.
Is a lot.
Is a lot.
A lot of signatures.
Yeah.
Whereas here, it's not, it's 20 to 25.
I don't think 20 to 25 is enough. I mean, I've got 50 family members.
Would they all sign it?
The majority of them probably won't. I think we need to come up with, if we're going to do that, we need to come up with a number, a percentage, and move forward with that if that's what, you know, we're planning on doing as far as getting the signatures. But 25, that's just, that's just not enough.
Yeah, I agree. I think it should be a number that shows some commitment to running, where you don't have a lot of people just get 25 and then they actually don't run. But at the same time, I'm going to, I'm going to support on the side where it enables for people to run. The last thing we want to do is discourage someone from running. So just talking about the idea of an option of the $500, I think the $500 has kept some people out of the race. So I think if we can come to a consensus on a number of signatures, I'm fine with that, even though it would probably not make it on this cycle.
Do we know what the county does? Because, I mean, some of their districts have about the same population as the city. Do they allow the signatures as well? Is it the same rules?
I have not looked into that.
So that way, if they do, so it's across the border.
Okay. I would support the following state statute and, but possibly a 5% requirement for petition, which would be 125 signatures.
I just don't think we can get that done by the time.
Right. That's what we're starting.
You'd have to have a first reading, a second reading, and then an adoption, and then the person would have to have the time to go gather the 125 signatures by March 25.
Well, I don't, I really don't think we're trying to do this just for this election cycle. I think it was something brought up that we need to do for the future. So when, if we want to make a motion to pass something that helps the future, but...
It's not going to make it for this time.
We can't do it. It's just impossible.
So what's the board's direction as far as this upcoming cycle? Just leaving alone with the $500 qualifying fee? Or adopt the state statute, where it could be 25 signatures?
I wouldn't change anything this election.
Just leave it alone for this time?
Personally, I really don't think that if somebody really wants to serve and serve the city, I don't really think $500 is going to keep somebody that's serious about running not to run. But that's strictly my opinion.
I mean, 100 signs cost $500.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, we can, we can, you know, kick this down the road if we want to, or we can make a decision today.
Since it's not going to be in this election cycle, I think we have time to think about it.
Okay.
I think, it sounds like we're all on board with a certain percentage, and I'm torn between five and 10. I think we just need to think and figure that out.
Right. All right, so you agree to table it, think about it, and put it on the agenda? I explained it. Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir. The first item we have is a reference to the government complex grant. Mayor and I have been working together to try to see if we can get a contract. Do you have an update for us, Mayor?
It's getting close. I talked to George Gonzalez this week. He assured me that they're diligently working on that price for us. He knows our deadline, and he committed to me that he would not let us lose that money that the DEO provided to us. So we're going to get something soon. So he knows we're under a deadline to spend the money or lose it, and he assured me that he's aware of it and we'd get something soon.
The next item we have is a reference to the Gateway Apartment Phase Two. At our last regular meeting, we did schedule a workshop that will be here, 2:11, which is next Tuesday at 6 o'clock P.M.
Okay, everybody keep that in mind, and we'll talk about Gateway and see if we can get something done there.
Can we get that posted on both the city Facebook page as well as the city website?
Yes, sir. I think it is. What Double Tresk is.
Yeah, and just stress the importance of the people in that area to try and attend.
Okay. On the new business, the first item we have was in addition, the use of the Stackhouse at Methodist Church. I believe one of their youth or children's program would like to be able to utilize a facility like they had in the past. Ms. Lynn Marshall is going to come and talk to us. Here she is.
Sign in to Ms. Lynn, please.
I am the youth director at the First Nine Methodist Church here in Port St. Joe. And as y'all know, we're going through a lot of changes with the church right now, trying to figure out the timeframe for us tearing down the church and getting, getting the ball rolling to build a new church there. When I started in July, we had, I had a youth group of 10 children. Now I have a youth group of 40 children. It's growing every day. And we have kids in our, in our youth group that are from all kinds, all over churches, churches that don't have a big enough youth, or they're, they're, they're just coming to our church, which is great, and we're happy about that. I've moved three times in the church with my youth, and moving 40 teenagers around is kind of hard. And we've sat on top of each other, we've sat on the floor, we're sitting in different places. And now that we are coming, getting closer to this thing, I really need a place that we can call our own. So we had, we had the old care closet on Fourth Street, that was going to be what we were going to do. We were putting our offices there and have our youth room and our choir room. Well, now that we've built it out for our staff, youth room, choir room, now we're putting a food pantry, it's taken up all the space, where I don't even have the space for the 40. So I'm trying to find out, figure out, when I think about this town and think about the needs that I have, the Stackhouse is a place that all of our children feel comfortable. There are things for them to do there. It's just a, it's a great asset to the community. And I would like, I would like to ask or talk, have some, just talk to y'all about, possibly if we could do something there on Wednesday nights with the youth group. If there's something, a way that we can, we can partner with you guys, and we will clean it up, we'll do service projects, pay rent, however we have to do it, but I see like the youth group growing very rapidly, and I need a place for them to be.
Okay, very good. I don't have any problem with it, Mayor, as long as it doesn't conflict with the summer program. That would be my only concern.
Yeah, we don't do youth in the summer. We do youth in summer, but we go on things, we do things around service projects in the summer, not on Wednesday nights.
How is the building as far as, is it really for use?
Yes, sir. It's actually right now, little use is being, at this point in time, but it is being used the first, eighth, and the fifteenth of this month for soft-bomb sandwiches on the Saturdays. We shouldn't have a conflict. But that's the only time I believe it's being used.
And we would love, I mean, we're willing to do anything there. Our youth can, they can do whatever to help, may even make it better.
I like the idea.
Thank you.
So what do we do?
Yeah, I mean, Stack is student activity center, but what it's from back in my day. So it's been a long time, and it needs to be utilized more, no doubt, except the three months in the summertime, and that's what we have it for. I don't have a problem, just need a motion to approve them doing it, and if you want to attach any kind of monetary figure or service figure or whatever, pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve rent free. Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second for allow the First Methodist Youth Group to use Stackhouse Wednesday nights at no charge. Is there any discussion, any more discussion, any discussion from the audience? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passed four oh. Get the Jim and Charlotte and y'all can work that out.
All right. Thank y'all so very much. I think that it's just going to be a great, great partnership. Thank you.
The next item we have is a reference to the city transfer station. I did have a conversation today with Commissioner Lowery. What we're looking at is the city transfer station referred to on Industrial Road was previously occupied by Waste Pro. Waste Pro is no longer occupying it, but they did leave the facility with a lot of debris that are still there. We have secured the facility and also sustained some damage from the hurricane. So we need a couple of things on there. Talking with Commissioner Lowery, what we're thinking is we may need to go ahead and have our attorney send another letter to Waste Pro explaining to them that the facility still is not being cleaned up. We actually withheld the last payment from Waste Pro in reference to this, but they still have not cleaned it up. And then we also need to be looking forward on there because he has had a conversation with Mr. Jason Tenell about the possibility of some type of lease over there. So we need to be thinking about, okay, what do we want to do to the facility? Do we want to redo the, re-skin the actual metal on the facility, or what we want for the new set?
How much was the insurance money we received on that?
The insurance was about $160,000 in insurance, and we have $187,000 pending with FEMA. That's not been finalized yet, but that's the current estimate from FEMA. But we have received $160,000 from insurance. So depending on your use, it sounds like you've got some money available to repurpose the building. Looking at the building, it's got a lot of cleanup to be done, but I believe it is a usable facility if it was, if new metal was put on the actual building.
So there's some Waste Pro property, usable property that's still there that belongs to them?
They left a lot of materials there. Yes, there's a lot of cans, wheels from trash cans, things that were used in their business.
Anything there that is usable for us or for resale or what have you?
I think it has potential. I think what my suggestion would be for, allow staff to work with Mr. Clint McKayhill to see if we can classify that as abandoned property. If it's not cleaned up with, then assume we're tied to the board and see what can be done with it.
I agree with that.
Or we could pay somebody to clean the place up, send them the bill.
Yes.
See if they'll pay the bill.
Well, we're withholding 40-some thousand dollars of their money right now. I think if Clint would, you and Clint come up with some kind of language that would pass them once again to clean the property up, and if they don't do it within 30 days, we could, I don't know if we can claim the abandoned property as ours or what, but I would say put some kind of end date on there for them so we can, we can move along, because we've got property that's valuable, it's an asset. We can be getting some rent from a new customer, and so I think that's what we need to do.
The next item we have is a reference to the Fourth of July fireworks budget. In previous years, we had budgeted roughly $15,000. Last year, we reduced it by due to Hurricane Michael. I talked with our vendor, they were like for us to see if we could get back to the 15. This actually helped secure somebody to actually stay on site with the fireworks, a dedicated employee to be there. Recommendation is to stay with these vendors. They've done a good job for us. We actually get $5,000 comes from the TDC each year of that budget, and the TDC actually pays for the New Year's Eve celebration.
So your recommendation is to up the budget to 15?
Yes, sir. We only had 12 in the budget this year, but I think we can, I think we can work and find $3,000. I would, I would recommend we go back to the 15,000.
I think we can hold that. So you want a motion, or you just want to?
Yes, that'd be great, since it was not, since it was not formally in the budget, it would be great to add on.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I don't like it.
Maybe we can get the three out of TDC. We're hitting them up weekly now, Commissioner Hoffman.
We're hitting them, but I haven't seen any results.
I'll motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay. You going to do it reluctantly, or you're just doing it?
Reluctantly.
Okay. Okay. As a motion to approve the increase from 12 to 15,000 for fireworks, is there a second? As a motion to approve the increase from 12 to 15,000 for fireworks, is there a second? Did you, second act, Mr. Langston? Okay, second by Commissioner Langston. Any further discussion? Discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye? Aye. Both, same sign, motion passed four oh.
The next item is titled Alarm Calls. Something the fire department has been looking at at one degree before you, just for consideration to be thinking about, is we have a volunteer fire department, and anytime there's calls, they want to, they want to have a quick response, time to get out there to all the different calls. And a portion of those are, are calls that are, are false calls. You know, where there's a problem with an alarm, or, or somebody set something off, or whatever the case may be. The truck, the truck rolls out, the guys have to leave their full-time job to go out there to answer a call. A lot of times, the police department tries to head those off to go ahead of time to show them, save the fire truck from getting there, but it's still time these guys go away from their full-time jobs. So they just wanted something for you to consider on there. In front of today was what Panama City does, so just food for thought for you to be thinking about.
So we have nothing, we have no ordinance at present time that addresses false alarms?
Yes, somebody could call in 15 false calls or alarms, be said, and we're going to respond because we don't know which one's a, a false call or which one's an actual fire.
Jim, is the majority of this, though, is not people calling in asking for the fire department? It's the alarms going off and the alarm company saying, we have an alarm.
Correct.
So it's not people intentionally doing it?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, me thinking about it, if there's some you would like to move forward on, talk with the fire department, police department, we'll, we'll keep it on for food for thought. It's totally up to the board.
I'd like to hear from the chief, the fire, the fire chief maybe in the future, and explain it instead of just reading it here straight from him.
Sure, this was the first time it had been put for you, so we just wanted you to start thinking about it, something to consider.
Have the police department respond also, so it's a double whammy there, so. And, and did you say approximately how many we get a month?
I don't have that number in front of me. It depends, it varies. You know, some weeks I see the fire truck roll out several times during the day, and then, and then sometimes you don't see the fire truck leave. Like this past week, I don't dream of seeing it this past week. It goes in cycles.
Well, part of the problem there, and I'll admit, the main stick suites gets a large number of these, and it's a lot of the, the phone infrastructure. It will send off a false signal, and we have to search the building before we call the fire department and say, stop. And so they're, it's a credit to them, they're fast, you know, they get there quick, but it takes a lot of time to go through three floors and smell for smoke before you can call them off. So I don't know, I mean, what businesses are going to be forced to do probably, if it's not required by statute, is to stop the whole reporting on the alarm system. We'll just have to call it in ourselves when the alarm goes off, which is dangerous as well. So I hate to.
What's making the alarm go off?
If there's a, if there's a bad phone line or it loses connection to the phone line, which sometimes go up or down in internet connections, it'll send an alarm saying there's no connection to the fire alarm. So, something to think about.
Let's see, the next item we have in reference to Centennial Building Paint.
I don't think most of you know by now, we're, we're in the process of painting the inside of the Centennial Building after about 20 years of no paint, so been working with Jim and John and all, everybody for that matter, it's, it's long overdue. So the Commissioner, County Commissioner Macron has, has authorized his inmate work crew to work with our inmate work crew to get this done fairly quickly, and we appreciate him doing that. Looks like we've got about a 10-day window, John?
Roughly, yes, sir.
10-day window to get it done, so I think we can get it done with all those folks working, and so we're excited about that. But I've also asked Jim and Bree, Bree, our secretary that, that handles all the reservations for parks and Centennial and all that, I've asked them to tweak the application field, application process a little bit, and put on there that the person that's renting it has physically gone out there with the city employee, they've gone through the building, they, they signed that everything was cleaned up and no deficiencies on that tour. So after it's over, we go back. If there's a problem, we keep the deposit. So also in there, no staples in wood or door frames or, you know, those type things. So it, it looks so bad, nobody respected it, and I understand why, but, but we're going to get it fixed up so they'll start doing the right thing and respecting a nice facility. So that's where we are with that.
The next item we have is in reference to Long Avenue Water Sewer Storm. We have been working on this for several years. We've seen several applications, went to the state of Florida and the state revolving fund, but to date, we have not secured funding. We had a good conversation last week with our grant writer, Mr. Smallwood and Mr. Grantland, and I spoke along with Ms. Pierce, and he suggested that what he would like to do is be able to shop this around. You know, there's some national programs and some state programs that he would like to be able to do. So he's got a task order in front of you for about 10 hours of work to go out there to shop this thing around and see if he can find a, a good fit for this project.
I'm excited about him reaching out to you, and he, he knows the rules of the game, and he can hopefully secure us a nice, a nice grant for building a new city complex or paving Long Avenue.
This is what we retained him for.
That's a back to back. Yeah. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the task order of $1,500.
Absolutely.
There's a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook, the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hoffman. Any further discussion? Discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye? Aye. Both, same sign, motion passed four oh, so hopefully something big will happen before long.
Yes, sir. The next item we have is the CDBG DR. This is what we've been waiting for, for a while to come down from the federal level. Our grant writer actually called us ahead of time before we got notified and told us the rules. He actually sent me a copy of those rules. So what you have is, the first thing that's going to take place is the Department of, Department of Economic Opportunity is the one that's going to be handling the application process at the state level. They will be here next Wednesday to hold a workshop. The workshop is actually going to be to do a need assessment. So we need people to come out, and we need to express concerns and the needs that we have in our community, because they have, that's one of the first steps that have to be done, and the rules coming down from the federal government. So if we can, we've already posted it, so all of us can attend, but it will be here next Wednesday at 3:30, so we need to really express to them the needs we need in our communities.
Jim, do you know what the rules are as far as what's the money going to be marched forward?
I have about 15 pages of rules that we're still working through, and, and I indicate, in all indication, our DEO is going to try to come help explain that somewhere to us on there, that we can find out to get to that application.
The rules are already flying?
Yes, sir. Yep, so those are things we need to get them to try to explain to us. Like I said, our grant writer sent it to us. I will forward that copy to you so you can have it too to be looking at. So we need to understand the rules and what we can or cannot possible.
I certainly am excited about it, as well as we need to show up and force staff, encourage our commissioners that already have obligations. We, we need to be here and show our interest in what they're doing and trying to help us with.
The last item I had on there is Bay Savers Letter of Support. Mayor, is that what I talked to today?
I was requested by the, one of the Bay Saber, I'm not sure Dr. May is the head of it or what, but they're doing everything they can to, to basically save St. Joe Bay and Apalachicola Bay. And he would, he just wanted us to vote on a letter of support for their actions. So there's a couple of free letters in here that we, we could adopt or ask Ms. Charlotte to come up with one on our own, but he would, bottom line, he wants a letter of support for what they're doing.
Mayor, does he want a letter of support for a particular project or just for the Bay Savers organization in general?
I think in general. They're, of course, the locks and all those, have all of the things be weighed down, but with the core especially, they, they need all the support from the government entities that they can get, so that's what it's all about.
I support a clean bay.
Okay, so you make a motion to, to, to letter of support to the Bay Savers. Okay, there's a motion there, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langston to letter of support, and, and if you would like, I'll, I'll get Ms. Charlotte and we'll, we'll tweak one of these letters and send it out. So any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. Both, same sign, motion passed four oh. All right, thank you, Mr. Jim. That's all of the new business. We go to departments now, and Mr. Grantland on public work.
Yes, sir. I do not have anything this afternoon, Mayor, unless the board has questions for me.
Anybody? Okay. Mr. Larry, surface board.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing new myself, so unless y'all have questions.
Okay, so we're assuming everything's running smooth on both departments? Okay, good. All right, Mr. Kevin.
Just a couple of things. We're repurposing one of the buildings, and we're building a lab inside one of the old buildings. It's one of the things that we're doing right now. So that seems to be going pretty well. We're using Career Source, that's who I'm using for help. We're on. So that's, that's working out pretty good so far. We're doing well on the pond. Pond seems in pretty good shape, three, almost three and a half foot of room. That's good for this time of year, we're doing pretty good. So everything's on track out there right now.
Right.
All looks pretty good.
Good deal, good deal. So did, did you have that budgeted or were you thinking ahead, or you just decided that?
We used the insurance for coding everything from Hurricane Michael because the lab and all that stuff was destroyed.
Right.
We had two empty buildings, that one was a generator room and one was a switchgear room. So the buildings were solid, and they weren't hurt. So I decided to, that's going to be our new workshop and lab and that kind of stuff. So we're just building the framework inside the building, repurposing the outside structure.
Right.
So it should save us a lot of money and give us a solid, you know, working structures.
Good. All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Mike, finance?
I'm, I'm still working on the summary of the insurance and the FEMA funds that we've received by site, and I should have that completed this week. I'd like to give that to you so you can start thinking about just what Kevin's doing. He's repurposing his facilities, not rebuilding something that was damaged, but putting in something that's sort of existing. So we certainly want to try to do that with all of our facilities. We've also submitted a request for waiver of the city's portion of the 12 and a half percent that, that we still don't have the final number on that. We put an estimate of the total damages at $9 million on the, on the waiver request, so we're waiting to hear back on that. But, but things are still moving forward with the recovery, and FEMA's got everything in their court, and I'll have that summary to you shortly, and so we can start thinking about the repairs we want to do at our facilities.
Does your, our FEMA rep, does he come once every week or is it vary?
He does, he does, come weekly.
Does he have a set day?
Yeah, he means on Friday, we have a meeting on Friday at 2:30 this week.
Okay.
Absolutely, and you're certainly welcome to sit in on that discussion. We are going to revisit one issue, and I have a, a meeting with them this week as well, and that is clearing the waterways, some of the canals and ditches. We didn't get any traction initially with them to help us with funding. Mainly, it's down trees in, in a lot of our canals and ditches, but we're meeting with them again tomorrow to try to revisit that issue to see if we can't get them to grab on, on funding the repair and removal of down trees in a lot of our ditches.
I mean, County receives a lot.
Yeah, they, they've got a, a good chunk of money, and I, I thought I brought it up last meeting, that, that we may want to reach out to them and see if you'd like, I can reach out to, to the chairman and ask him, we, we've got some serious issues around inside the city and.
Absolutely, yes, I think I should coordinate with him on, on that.
Yeah, so, and, and then, John, if you, if you don't already have a list of, maybe some kind of list I can get with you on, so, so I can, when I talk to him, I'll be a little more specific.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, we have a list of the GPS location of the ditches that we've put in to FEMA that, that we can provide, yes.
Okay.
One question, Mike. Mike, has any city successfully got that 12 and a half percent waived to this point?
I'm, I'm not sure, to be honest with you. We were just told we needed to put that waiver request in. We're hopeful as a small community that we might get a little extra leeway on that, but with.
Their rules allow it, we just don't know if it's been successful in the past.
Right.
Yeah, I, I know, you have 18 months of the data that we have to get that request in. It actually goes to the governor's office. One thing to think about too is some events have been reduced down to 10%, 5% for the state and 5% for the municipality or the county. We're currently still at 12 and a half for the city and 12 and a half for the state. So at some point, we also probably need to talk with not only our state representatives, but our national representatives, because there is a mechanism that can reduce it down to 10%, and then you can actually ask the governor for a reduction of that percent.
Because I saw it, Jim, I think on the form that you showed me, it was almost 1.6 million would be our match if we got the full amount.
So many dollars, if we got the full amount of the nine point, whatever we have in the quarter.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Okay, good deal. All right, Mr. Clay, city engineer?
Yes, sir. Couple of quick things. The trail lining, that paperwork's been sent to Duke, so it involves in their court on that, to get those lights up, and we're working on other elements of that trail project in D-Town. The paving at Jett Park, Clifford Center Park contractor is Roberts and Roberts is a sub to the company that's replacing the bridge over at Ever House in 98. They're supposed to start that work next week, and he said while they were down here doing that, they would jump over and get Clifford Seals. So I'm, I'm not saying they don't do it next week, but they're going to be in town, so I would assume the next couple of weeks they're going to get Clifford Seals knocked out. It shouldn't take very long. Two things that aren't on here that we just want to talk about it. One is the gazebo at Frank Lake Park, you know, received bids probably four months ago now, maybe, and so those bids are quite old. The low bidder reached out last week and said, hey, they're, you know, they don't reject the bids, have they rejected the bids? They just need to get their bond released and freed up. And so if that's something y'all are interested in, you can just reject those bids so we can at least cut it loose and move on and go to where our plan is.
I don't remember if it was you or somebody else, but I was told that if we were to move that pavilion up onto land, that it would save a substantial amount of money because we wouldn't have to do the pilons into the, into the bay.
Yeah, talk to Mr. Anderson a little bit about it. I think there's probably some savings there. I, I don't know how substantial it is. I certainly agree that one of the more challenging parts of that project was installing the pilons because of how far the reach is away from the jetty, and then just kind of the shallow waters, not deep water, and bring the bars with the crane on it like you typically would. So I, I agree, that's the challenge of that project. I just don't, I think there's some other challenges that would come on moving it back to the jetty, too. So I don't know. I, I can't place a dollar now on it, but there may be some cost savings there.
Would you say that the pilons that are in the water now from the old gazebo need to be removed, irregardless of if we rebuild it?
Right.
We still wouldn't be using those pilons, correct?
That's right.
If nothing else, maybe we can look at, get that eyesore out of there, you know?
Yeah, we could, we could let a bid on, on removal.
Yeah.
But right, right now, we need a, need a motion to reject all, all bids on the gazebo slash pier project, so.
That's your recommendation?
I'd do it at this point. I mean, I, yeah, at this point.
We're still waiting on FEMA, right, to find out?
Yes, FEMA's not finalized the numbers, the, the current number total with insurance and FEMA is 230K, which is way.
More than likely, even if FEMA comes back, we're going to have to rebid.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's happened a little bit.
Yeah.
So we, I don't, I don't look at it as priority right now.
I made the motion, Eric.
Okay, motion to reject the bids. Second, second, Commissioner Hoffman, any more discussion? All in favor, aye? Both, same sign, motion passed four oh. So let, got to know that. Are they, on the paving, are they going to mill, are they going to mill that or go over what's there?
It's a combination of both. There's some of the asphalt that's got to come out, and then there's some asphalt that we can, that's still good, and the base under is good, and we can leave, but at the end of it, it's all going to get the final cap, so you're not going to see that hodgepodge or the patches that are going on underneath. You're going to have one consistent looking surface.
Good, good deal.
The last thing, if I can, is Mayor, the Nerdus Stormwater Project, which was mentioned last meeting, I think the week of the 23rd is when we would like to have that next public hearing, March 23rd.
March 23rd.
We've got to coordinate that date and time with obviously the city and then with DCP and Water Management, so the number of people that we've got to coordinate with if that's something, that week would work for y'all, a day and a time that don't matter to us, but we'll at least get that out there.
I'd say, that's a Monday.
Like I say, anytime in that week, just that.
That week of the 23rd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we've got a meeting on the 3rd and 17th, 24th, it's Tuesday?
Fourth and the 18th, Mayor, right?
February?
March.
March.
Last one is March.
Jim, you know of anything, any conflicts on 24th? And what time of day we're going to...
Y'all will be able to vote for the board.
Okay. 24th, okay with everybody up here right now?
Oh, wait a minute, no, Mayor, I will not be here. Nope, that's incorrect, I will be back in twenty seconds.
Okay, 24th looks good, we just need to set a time, five o'clock.
Sure.
Gives everybody that working whatever a chance to get here. That's good, think it'll be good with the water management team?
Yeah, we'll send help to them.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. We'll plan that March 24th, five o'clock for Nerdus Workshop.
Okay, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
I remember we paid and authorized some divers to do a survey of the bulkhead on the outside of the bay or outside, bayside. What are the results on that and weren't we looking at being compensated for damage to the bulkhead and is FEMA involved in that?
Yes, and we submitted those videos to FEMA and the discussions were that it wasn't clear that what portion of the damage was caused by the storm. A lot of the damage was preexisting and so it just kind of stalled. There wasn't any way for us to get someone, a certified engineer that could put a stamp on it and say that, yes, this damage was caused by the storm. So, it came convoluted with FEMA trying to figure out whether they were going to support us to replace the whole thing, only replace a portion of it, and so it kind of died and it's still sitting there as discontinued on our end because it didn't seem like they were going to step up and support the repair of that.
Do you know what the, I know that when we did it, we used the same divers that were working for St. Joe Company when they were looking on the inside wall. I'm just wondering, maybe we should check with them and ask, what did you do to go any further? Did y'all just leave it alone or...
Well, I don't think St. Joe Company's dealing with FEMA, they've been dealing with insurance, so I don't know their discussions with them, but their wall on the inside is just in terms of age quite a bit different than the outside bulkhead.
Yeah, yeah.
From the nineties or early 1900s, it was built, you know, the bulkhead on the outside is actually a lot older than that. And Mike's right, that was my understanding from FEMA, that you can see the damage, but how do you know if it was storm or how do you know if it's aged? The cliff notes version from the diving company was basically this wall that needs to be repaired, it needs to be replaced. I mean, that's the place up there, you just can't actually look at the walls over the state. It's not a low dollar amount.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't want to open Pandora's box on that wall, but if there's funding available that we could reach out and, you know, maybe follow up on. There has to be some damage from the hurricane.
That's right.
I mean, we should enter into some negotiations maybe on Friday when you see the guy and just say, well, we're not asking you to rebuild the entire wall, we're just asking you to step up and fund us partially because we all agree that there's damage to the bulkhead.
Right, then it becomes an issue of if they're going to support us partially, then are we going to be able to fund the rest of it if it needs to be replaced?
Yeah.
They're only going to pay us to replace two panels, we need to replace, I don't know how many panels, we have to eat all that, that's all out of our pocket. So, it didn't seem fiscally responsible to move forward because we didn't have that money and we haven't developed an estimate of what the total replacement cost would be, you know, so maybe that would be a start.
Maybe just too convoluted to mess with.
That's why we stopped pursuing it. Unless we could get an engineer to stamp that this was damage from the hurricane, FEMA wasn't going to really step up to the plate, because it was our impression of the discussions that we had with FEMA.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Code enforcement, Jim, you got anything on that?
Mayor, do have a couple of updates for you. We did have a first code enforcement hearing this past month. There were two orders that are being worked on by your magistrate in there, one for, I believe is give them both about forty-five days for cleanup, so those will be coming back to you if they're not taken care of. One more than likely will not be, so we're going to have to be thinking ahead as to how we're going to start utilizing city funds to take care of these problems and leaving the property.
Is one of them a complete tear down or just clean up yard?
One is a cleanup of a yard and the other one is a complete tear down. It was, the house was badly damaged after the storm, it damaged before. I believe it's going to show up as an uninhabitable structure that's going to need to come down.
All righty, anything else? Okay, Mr. Matt, police department?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two updates real quick. DOT contractor installed the curve and delineators yesterday at two locations that you guys approved, so I don't know if you've seen them, but...
Looks great.
Appreciate y'all.
Some unhappy people around. If needed, go on.
I haven't heard negative comment yet.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's coming.
They're out there, yeah.
Appreciate you guys looking out for safety and putting something like that in place. Appreciate Mr. Grantland's work, he's the one that really got the ball rolling and got DOT on it. The other thing is plans are being drawn for the police department, so hopefully in the coming days, we'll do something about that.
That's great. He reached out to a draftsman and he's gone through there, he's going to lay it out the best for the police department and safest and all the above, so we appreciate you guys getting on top of that. Okay, anything for the chief? All right, moving right along, let's, here's...
Yes, sir. Last meeting you mentioned, I believe Martha Matthews brought it up about the HGTV reaching out to a community. Angel Barbie Parker called one day this week. She had been working on a video and has submitted and it has to be in by tomorrow and she let me know this morning that it's been up 24 hours and there've been 24,580 views of the video.
Wow.
So, it has been submitted and she apparently has done an awesome job on it. We have the website if you'd like to look at it, but she does have it.
Let's get a thank you note out to her if you will.
All right, sure.
Get something up, we'll sign it, we'll get it off, that was fantastic, you just took it on her own and took off with it, so.
Apparently, a lot of people are enjoying it if she's had that many hits and views.
I watched it this morning. Did you? And you too?
It's a Facebook, it's a website.
I just saw it on Facebook.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can get you something to look at it with, but I think that's the phenomenal viewing.
Okay.
It's reaching out and touching.
Yeah.
That's all I had, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, before we go to citizens heard, there was one thing that wasn't on the agenda that I forgot to update the board on. After the first meeting, I was instructed to write a letter to the people who are leasing the dance academy here and I did send them a letter basically telling them that for various reasons that we view the lease is terminated and I did hear from Mr. Clay Walker and as far as they're concerned, it's done, it's over.
Okay.
We can change the lot. He also instructed that there was no property in there, that they were going to come back and get, it's just they're done.
So, done, so what?
We can change the locks, we can do whatever we want.
Go clean it out and so forth because Matthews Church are trying to open up a new food bank and I think at one time they reached out to somebody about the use of that facility, it's got a door on the far end, it would be great to augment the food bank we already have because we just, there are a lot of people in need, so down the road, we may want to look at that if it's available.
Would we be able to take down the ballerinas on the outside of the building?
We can do whatever we want.
They'll be down in the morning.
Thank you. In the meantime, you got, do you still have a key to the, key to it or...
No, they have to get it.
It's actually unlocked on that side.
Oh, is it? So, we need to get in there, change the locks, start cleaning it out, just add that to number 112 on John's list.
It'll be done tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now let's move on to citizens be heard, we'll open the floor to anybody that likes to speak. Come right up, please.
Kristy McElroy, Woodford Avenue, Port St. Joe. I'd like to cover two things. I know that, I'm glad we have a new attorney. However, my concern is what happened in the past. I pulled some information based off of some information that I've got from someone to see that, you know, Adam had a partnership called Constitution Title LLC with Jeremy Novak. I've made copies of this, I want to submit it to end the record. I don't know what kind of vetting we do when we hire someone for that amount of money. I mean, I think he was making $54,000, isn't that which I voted on?
That is correct.
And so, not only was he making that kind of money, he had a partnership with the county attorney. How in heaven's name are you supposed to be able to negotiate for the benefit of the city when you have that kind of partnership? This effective date on the Sun Viz Corporation says 213, 2013.
Can I interrupt you one minute? If you maybe just get to the point because that's over with as far as the former attorney...
Mr. Mayor, it isn't over with because this man was in here, in Port St. Joe because of recommendations and we need to be careful who we're paying. This is my tax money, this is these people's tax money.
I don't have a problem with you stating that, stating that, but as far as being personal and talking about other people.
I am going to say that because it's a conflict of interest.
It was, it was.
Okay, and so, we need to be quite clear about that. My second item is I would like to know when BCC is supposed to pick up debris.
What does that contract say?
They told us they would be picking up yard debris the first week of each month.
Entire week of each month, okay, so it should be going on now.
Okay, because again, everyone's trying to clean up the yards, we're not sure how big we can make our piles and we need them to be doing this. And to y'all's point, and this is current, they're not doing a very good job.
We've talked to them about debris, it's four by four by four.
And again, I don't care who, what kind of partnerships people have, if they're going to be paid by our city, by our city taxpayers, they need to do their jobs and they need to do them in full capacity.
I think we've talked to them.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other citizens be heard, want to be heard? Okay, we've got to discuss an item with our commissioners and I don't remember who started first last time. Is that...
I don't know.
Mayor, I never get to go first.
Okay.
Just a couple of quick things. Charlotte, to your point, HGTV, that program, the TDC, yesterday at their meeting voted on approval for, it was an eight-minute video that they've also posted today and they also said that there's been several citizens that have made application on behalf of the city, so it's going to be a pretty good shot. It was kind of a tearjerker, it was all storm-based and we need your help, so we should get a lot of... And on that note, on the TDC, I did bring up our request for funds for the tennis court lights, the bathrooms at Peters Park and others, and I basically asked them to clarify the process and how it worked because the TDC is an advisory board. We make recommendations to the TDC staff, they get approval from the county. What they had asked is for, in writing, we ask for what we want. It'll come before a county meeting or a TDC meeting to validate whether it does bring in tourism or not. Some ideas may, some ideas may not. From that point, they bring it up to the county to be voted on in their budget and the county can either strike that line or move forward with it. But what I'm asking this board to do is to come up with those definitive projects and put it in writing to be voted on at the next TDC meeting. That's all that I have, Mayor.
Good idea, good idea. So, Commissioner Hopland or anybody else that has an interest in those projects, we're going to fund it, maybe get Jim and Ms. Charlotte and let's get a letter, get it down, bring it, put it on the agenda for next meeting and we'll vote on it. Is that what you're requesting?
Yes, and I mean, just keep in mind, the goal of the TDC is to bring people to town from outside of town, so any projects that we think of, you know, we need to justify that it does draw tourism.
Do we have to justify it based on any other application that goes into TDC like a scholar festival and they say how many they're going to bring or are you just asking for a letter for us requesting this because we believe it will help tourism?
There's no formal, formal way to request that it wouldn't hurt in the letter to say, you know, that if we ask for something at Core Park, you know, that it brings in events like the scholar festival. Anything we can say that it promotes tourism would help.
Well, you need to remember that the one item that had been approved before it all kind of went south was the funding of 10th Street Ballpark.
Right.
So, I'm kind of looking at, yeah.
There was always arguments about tournaments bringing in tourism.
Right, right, because that, you know, we had already been in agreement that we were not looking at bringing state tournaments, there was no way for parking. So, I want us to be, in comparison to that, that was approved to, if we're going to look at the bathrooms and the entire Peters Park area, I think it'd be easy to articulate that it'd bring in the tourism and guests from outside of the area to the events that are utilized there. I mean, at one point, we had softball games going on and the majority of people were coming from Panama City to utilize that ball field, which is in disrepair.
Yeah, I was about to say something about that, especially the dugouts and the lights used to be redone because the spring is coming up and they definitely will have people out there playing softball, kickball. Maybe we can get the TDC to look into that.
Didn't we vote last meeting or meeting before on a $300,000 request from Commissioner Hopland, 150 for the tennis courts and 150 for the softball field?
And the bathroom.
And the bathroom. So, that's already been voted on.
Mayor, I think y'all had a discussion on it, but I don't...
Never been a vote?
Okay, I just need something formal, Mayor, to present.
Well, I would rather make, I'll make the motion now at this meeting instead of waiting another whole meeting. I'll make the motion that we approve the discussion that we made and seemed to be in support of at, I guess, the last meeting, which was 150,000 for the tennis courts that we now are moving towards leasing from the school system and that would, that'd cover the resurfacing, obviously, and the lighting and then another $150,000 that would be spent both in the bathrooms at the gymnasium and the softball field and Peters Park.
I think that's appropriate, I don't, anybody got a problem with that?
I do with modification because the downtown redevelopment has already, has already come up with about $100,000 for the bathroom, which I've been told will complete the bathroom. And the softball field, I don't know what that's going to take, money wise, but it is not going to take $150,000. What I would like to do, you know, there's five pennies at the TDC, the first three are for marketing, the fourth penny was for beach or nourishment and the fifth was for recreation. We can also look at that fourth penny, if there's a $5,000 line item in our downtown redevelopment budget for beach or nourishment, can we use that out of a different pot of money? I'd like to see it be a more thorough letter of this is what we're asking for. I don't think that 150 for the softball fields in the... I don't think that a hundred and fifty for the softball fields and the bathrooms is necessary because Commissioner Quinn has already committed to fight for a fifty thousand dollar match.
From the county.
From the county.
And the city has agreed through the CRA group to match that fifty. And then I think it would be appropriate that the TDC would partner with those two and come in at fifty thousand. So I'm fine with reducing the amount of money for the bathrooms because you're right, there is an additional hundred thousand there. So let's just ask them to put in the even amount that.
Even fifty?
Yeah, an even fifty for the bathrooms. And we can probably do the softball field for fifty because it's going to need lighting. Lighting is expensive. And the lighting there, I think we've actually robbed some of the lights and used them other places. So we could reduce the hundred and fifty down to a hundred thousand for the Peters Park area.
And one fifty for the tennis courts, so you're talking two fifty instead of?
Instead of the three hundred thousand.
Can we ask that without entering into the lease or should the school board be asking for that?
Well, the whole reason for the lease was the TDC can't fund the school board, remember?
Right.
That's why we're working on moving forward with the lease solely for the purpose of being able to get the.
Can we ask them? If you give us this money, that will enter.
That's what I'm going to say, in the lease.
As opposed to entering into a lease first and find out if we're not getting any money.
Sure. Well, but I think it's fair to say that the school board is not really in a position where they can spend the money on the tennis courts currently with the budget that they're faced with now. So even if the school board is not going to assist us with any of the resurfacing and all, I'd still like to have that court under the city. And then I'm going to argue that we spend some city money or some CRA money.
Saying that you want to lease the tennis court, whether you get any money from the TDC.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. I still want to move forward with the lease because we made a commitment to the tennis players that we're going to work towards having a good place to play tennis.
Keep in mind, I think in that lease, I might want to add a termination clause in case we don't want it, if we enter into it, then we can get out of it.
Yeah.
I'll make that change.
So do you, what's your motion?
My motion now is to ask for funding from the TDC. And the funding would be earmarked for fifty thousand dollars from TDC funds to help the city and the county who are already putting in fifty thousand for the bathroom renovations at the gym at Peters Park. Additional fifty thousand dollars for both Peters Park and the softball field at Peters Park. On top of that, for them to fund the city, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars contingent upon the lease being approved at the tennis courts beside the soccer field.
I still feel there could be more added, Mayor. I'd love to throw in the five thousand for the park, the beach or nourishment. And I'd love to look at, you know, the possibility of funding the bathrooms at Port Park. If we're going to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollar splash pad and have no bathrooms there, you know, that's another thing. I don't want to ask for all of this upfront and be shorting ourselves either. These are all, I want to show them, these are the projects that we want to work on, which ones will you help us with?
Well, but you have to remind yourself that not too far in the past, the city had been promised somewhere between eight hundred thousand and one point two million dollars for a Field of Dreams or for redoing the baseball fields and softball fields on Ten Street. Remember, we chose as a committee, actually, on where we wanted to do the baseball fields and softball fields and sports complex, whatever you want to call it. But that money was already earmarked and promised to the city. So it's not like it's really a new ask. We're just saying, well, that didn't work out, but we have lots of places that we can spend that eight hundred thousand dollars.
And I'll just let you know that their budget is approximately just over three hundred thousand dollars a year on that fifth penny. They have about a hundred thousand that they keep in reserves. So at any given time, the most that they have in a year is four hundred thousand dollars. I can't speak to where that eight hundred is. The county wrote a letter saying it doesn't exist because we turned it down. Well, I turned it down, we didn't go forward. But the reality is, there's three hundred thousand dollars a year. They promised the golf course a hundred of that for the next three. So that leaves two hundred, but then you take staff out of that, there's about a hundred thousand that they can play with, which is why they said twenty-five for us, twenty-five for we will offer splash pad.
And I get what you're saying, and you're privy to a lot more information than I am because I'm not at the meetings with the TDC and I'm not a part of their budget. My job is to look for funding for the city. I don't work for the TDC or the county. So I'm going to focus on what can we do in the city. Now, if the TDC comes back to us and says, we received your request and here's what we can fund you at, then we look at that and we.
And that's what I think is going to happen. They're going to come back with this, what we can do.
But today, we're trying to figure out, how do we formally request funding for those projects?
Just the letters, all we know.
Yeah, and I think your motion is well-taken. Shoot for moon up there somewhere, maybe get somewhere in between and we get a little more out of it than five thousand dollars for fireworks. So anyway, there's, your motion is standing at the two fifty.
Yes.
And you'll work with Jim and Ms. Charlotte on the letter?
Right, yep.
All right, motion, there's a second.
I said.
There's a second. Mr. Langs, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, both, same sign?
No.
Okay, motion passed three to one. All right, let's see. Commissioner Hoffman, up with your thing, or we got off track, we still on yours?
Oh, no, I'm done, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, who wants to go next? Commissioner Langs, you.
I don't have much, but I just want to talk about the problems that we're having with these dogs. I wanted to see if staff can come up with something that we can do to, to make it a safer community and we won't have to worry about these dogs running around in packs. And I would like, I would like, actually like to try to focus on us as dog catchers, you know, city dog catcher. And looking for a place to take them, you know. So I don't know how long it'll take us to do that or what, just look into it and see what you come up with, Jim.
I know it's a problem, actually, I've heard from several residents. We've been in contact with the dog catchers, see if they can make regular rounds down here. Right now, we contracted out with the county in our local agreement. So yes, we have asked them to make more rounds down here because we know there is a problem.
Yeah, because that county dog catcher, he, I don't see him that much. And people call and call and call and he may show up and he may not, you know, so we definitely need to stay on top of that.
Tried to give him a call today.
How much we pay in the county?
We don't. Right now, we're actually, basically what we do is the city and the county help out with the Humane Society. That's where the animals are actually taken to now. So in other cities, what you get into, in Bay County, other cities, most of them, what you do is you pay to house them. So when you get into the dog catching business, what you have is first, you got to have a train. There's requirements on dog catching. You got to have a special piece of equipment. You have to have a licensed dog catcher. And you have to pay for room and board on those animals. So we can get quite pricey on there. We've had the luxury of working with the Humane Society on there that's worked in the past, but there have been a number of stray animals that have shown up.
So that five thousand a year we give to the Humane Society just basically covers our room and board?
That helps out with the room and board.
And they don't do any catching?
Yeah, we don't have any cost associated with it right now.
I motion big joker, dog catcher.
I wonder if they might have somebody that would want to assist in catching the dogs? And then we could help them fund that spot or something.
We need to think about it because there's a need. If we can get the existing dog catcher to take care of it, it saves us a bunch of money. But at the same time, we need to make sure the body is addressed.
Yeah, and sooner or later, we're going to have to because it's going to be somebody that get injured. And I just don't want that to happen. And also, you want to look out for the animal too, you know. Make sure nobody hurts it because people tend to want to protect themselves and may not know how to act around that animal and get vicious, you know, toward them. So we definitely need to look into that.
One thing too, we need to remind everybody, we do have a leash law. We have a lot of animals that are running around with collars on. People may be injured that they need to keep their dogs on a leash or in a yard.
Now, Commissioner Langs, do you have anything? Commissioner Hoffman?
All I had was the TDC issue we've covered, I think.
You guys do such a good job. You steal all my thunder every week, so I don't, I don't really have anything.
You should go first then.
I might do that. I might do that next time. But I would like to remind you that our city managers' contracts will be coming up at our next meeting. So I'd like you to do your due diligence and your soul searching before then. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you all for coming.